We don't normally see. I feel like somebody has something they want to say to the council. We're going to get that out of the way first. Is anybody on the list to speak, Ms. Mayor, or do you not?
Nobody left, so no.
All right, does anybody here have something they want to say about the city or whatever?
Oh, thank you. Did this thing sound negative for me? Actually, I didn't. I thought somebody really did this week. I would say I thought it was an occasion. I thought it was a family group. Well, thank you. I thought it always did.
Well, we're glad to have you if you're here just to see what's going on.
Yeah, I always think it's on Tuesday. Miss Sally approached us then, and I was like, I mean, so.
Okay, thank you, Trey.
They need to know, so.
Yes, thanks for coming, come back.
I won't be a part of this.
What was your name, Hannah?
Brian Fennessy. Yeah, I live behind the IGA in the big white house.
Oh.
And at the city club, I like meet them.
But tomorrow night, if you want to come. Yes, tomorrow.
Do you know everybody up here?
I'm just passing, that's me.
Okay, Ricky Dean.
And as I say, of course.
Pat Hall, Marvin Brown, Cleveland Shy. He ain't shy, but he got stuff to say. Joey K. Dean, Mr. Larry Williams.
What was your name on the ticket?
Brian Fennessy.
Fennessy?
Fennessy.
Fennessy.
Fennessy. He lives on the end of the road.
Oh, in the end of the road.
You're right.
He's in the White House, going on, what's going on?
He's laughed out from his left hand, he is, so.
That's privacy question.
Okay.
I did not make it look nice.
So well.
Okay. Do we have anything else that needs to be brought up before we try to get into the meeting? Okay, and if we don't, can we get a motion to approve the minutes of the last council meeting? Got a motion out there?
Second.
Hold in favor? If all of you were like I am, you didn't get your books until the day.
No, they got theirs Friday. I don't know how Kathy didn't give you yours, I'm sorry.
I haven't gone through the financials, but the last time, I don't think they changed that much. We have a motion for approval of the financials. Got a motion out second?
Second.
Hold in favor? Okay, our police chief is in a conference learning how to be a jailer. How to do it right, or he did not do it wrong, or whatever. I didn't know that until today, but he's not here. Sam, do you have anything that you want him brought up?
Not the more of sir.
Sorry?
Not the more of sir.
Okay. Um, we've got somebody who's working part-time. Kind of doubling up some of the hours. So if you see somebody who screams at the BKT.
And these are additional, and these are covering hours that they don't normally cover now, is that right?
Well, he's trying to kind of overlap so we don't end up with overtime hours. Rick, have you got anything to take on the financials? Ricky, I, you might want to touch on the work side, or you want me to?
I'll look more about it. Actually, I explained it better than I did.
Okay, I'm sure everybody here knows that we have lack of water by the time it's too late. We have not figured out why we've had a problem. We are doing several different things to dig out the problem, see if we can figure out what's causing it. But we have actually broken cupboards on the main shaft on the new well. We had to bring a pump in, install it in the old well. That was part of the slow getting water going again. We got that in, and unless somebody holds a gun in my head, that pump will be there waiting. If the other one tears up again, where all we have to do is flip the switch. We're not going to get any problem we had before. That's just trying to cover all the bases. We are in the process of redoing this old well. We're putting a new pump in it. Do all the re-barring. They will be able to, that will be a standby well. They've already done all of the.
That goes to show you that everything new isn't better.
That's true.
Well, yeah, that's true. We can't prove that it's electric problem. We don't know.
You don't have an engineer to come in and check it?
We've had everybody except somebody from Washington DC. But the well driller is standing there looking at it and saying, I've never in forty-something years experienced this. I mean, this is the man who's working on it, his third generation. They do wells all up and down the east coast. They were actually rehabbing a well in Albany and brought some of their equipment from there down here to get it. To help make it work quicker. They went in and put in new parts, cranked it up, and it never did bring water all the way to the top of the ground. And they had to pull it out again. That makes three times that. All the shafts have been, now every cupping is brand-new. Part of the, or two or three of the joints for shafts is brand-new. Today at lunch, it was running like it should. George Powers come in and put some monitors on it to see if it is power that's causing it. We just don't know. And all rights, everything that was in that well is at least one step above recommendation. So maybe we overdid it, I don't know. We had to back up what was left, I don't know, but that's where we are right now.
Have they just caused under warranty, or are they charging us for?
We have never fully accepted the job, so the warranty basically is not stopping. And my statement the other day to some of the people down there in charge of it was, it ain't fixing the start until we figure out why. Now, that's just me talking to you. But between me and this man right here, it takes two of us signing the check. Both of us have to sign, so if it comes down to it, somebody might not even sign their name. They get cranked real quick. But I feel like that we're protected and they are taking care of the problem for us. They were in here working in the rain, thunder, and lightning. It's just like people, life or death. And it, you know, it feels that way. I mean, that's one thing, when you go to get drunk water, you want to run. We don't want to have to run out the yard and deal with mud water or whatever, but. We are, we are not sitting back and just waiting. Patrick and I were down there before daylight and right at dark, trying to make things work. We didn't know what, yeah, we were doing, we were just trying.
I wish one thing the community would understand is, when something like that happens, Mr. Marvin is on top of it, always. Anything that the city needs, he is immediately on it. So if, and I, yeah, I don't like having water, not having water or electricity either. But the comments that are bandied about is, why aren't they doing something? Why is this, why is that? It don't happen overnight. It takes time, it takes resources, it takes getting people here, understand that we all use the same, the same water, and we want it just as bad as everybody else. Maybe even more so. So just, yeah, call, you know, call in and say, we don't have water if you think we don't know, or they don't know it. But if you know they know, let them do their job. They're doing the very, very best they can, I guarantee you.
He sent me texts and stuff a lot.
A lot of pictures, and say, anybody that doesn't know this, needs to know it. We've got a call, set up. When we have a problem.
Yeah.
It's on, it's on the phone.
It is.
We have people that come up here and say, well, my name's on the list. I didn't read what the text said, or I didn't read the email.
Why, it could be right.
If you don't have it, it's very subtle. Give us a name and a phone number, and your name will be on there too. And it's, it's going to be out there pretty surely. Any kind of problem is going to be notified to the public. Everybody here cares. I don't have city water because I've spent money to put in a well several years ago. But everybody's at the staple.
Well, we got to know what it's called once.
Ma'am? Bring your bucket. Bring your bucket, bring your water jug, whatever. If you needed, if you needed that bad, you can find me.
And the thing about it is, things happen. And instead of fussing and griping about it, we should be like, okay, what can we do to make it better?
That's right.
When this happens again, instead of fussing and griping about it. Now, I love the positively pay vote page on Facebook. But if it's not going to be positive, and there's negative comments, I would prefer for it to be taken down.
It ain't, it ain't positive.
Or those comments need to be monitored or something.
Based on that, maybe.
Yes, because, I mean, I don't want it to be a negative place for people to just, you know, post all these negative things about pay vote. So I think we need to really look at that and make sure that we're not getting all these negative comments about pay vote. I think some comments can be monitored.
Right.
And, you know.
And there's rules, and they need, they know.
We like to, you know, look at that.
I only said, I put amen.
That's right.
I just put that there because my wife stopped. I was telling the kids about not having on their record. I was about to get one.
Uh-oh.
But they were sandbasing, we were taking money.
You're going to get your head skinned, that's what's going to happen to you.
No, she's not about to mess with me.
Okay.
I'm on a crusade.
Yeah, I know you're here tonight by yourself, she's not here. If you forget, all of us have been buried at one time or another, but we're there. We all understand. But if we got that out of the way, oh, you okay if you got anything on the library and recreation?
Um, no, sir, at all.
Cleveland, New York, I know.
No, just got to send you another copy of that, I can't find it. I cannot find it. But I did want to say, is there a way that we can? I know that Tifton has this, and I think Osilla, I know those two towns have it. Is there a way that we can get a sign that says Golf Car Community? I know those towns have that.
You have to, the state has to.
How do you do that? How do you go about that?
Because you're not supposed to be on state highways.
Right.
You can get a ticket, and in Pavlo, there's, you can't get anywhere except your own neighborhood without crossing thirty-three, or one-twenty-two. But the only ones are going to give you a ticket is the state patrol.
That's right.
If they wanted to, and you know.
Now, I thought at one point, we had a crossway.
We tried to do, we tried to do that. Remember that when I was city clerk, we tried to do that, and that.
The OT one.
Yeah, they won't, they won't.
Okay, I know it's two towns that do that, but I just know there's a lot of.
Well, I know, is Boston one of them?
I don't know.
Because they're set that off for the highway, see, and so they.
They probably can.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But see, yeah. The only way you can do it, I don't know if there's some way you can petition the state to allow it. But there'd have, well, here's what has to happen, I do remember, just, you have to have crosswalks, mark crosswalks and difference that. I mean, there's rules.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that we have to look into.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's impossible, but back then.
Yeah, just do that.
It was cost-effective. But as many, as many lawnmowers and golf carts and all kinds of little, you know, it would be, it would be good. It'd be a lot safer.
It would be.
I mean, we all love to do it.
So something a lot you can look into.
But when you do it, you just got to know, you may get a ticket.
Right.
I can tell you one thing, if someplace in Florida, he could not blow you home out of it. They would get your tag number, make you look at their visitor.
Really?
Because they own that street, or they're rich. You don't believe it ever.
Well, if we want to go look into that further, we can maybe give it to your room and let them just research it. Come back and tell them something.
Let's see if there's something.
What we have to do, if y'all want to do it, how come?
All right, we need to touch on the one shade or something.
No, we tabled that until, I was scheduled to, we tabled that as part of the other project overall.
Ms. Mayor, what did we find out about the playground equipment?
We can sell it to them for a dollar, but we can't give it away.
We can sell it to the concerned citizens.
Yes. We do not have to go to auction because its value is less than five hundred dollars.
Is that, is that satisfied?
Yes.
Playground equipment, so we're replacing. We don't know exactly when that'll be, but. Hopefully ours is only for you this month.
Might have to reinforce.
Take care of that one. Get it up.
We may even pay the dollar for it.
They got to pay their own dollars.
God, we're probably paying it all. They don't have to know where a crown is.
So, Mary, have you heard anything about the new stuff coming?
No, I did, I did call him this morning, as a matter of fact. And I asked him if there were any other updates. And he said, as far as he knew, everything was still on schedule. It's supposed to be sometime this month, but he has not given me a specific date.
Okay. We are intending to stay with our million rate of two-point-four, just as it was last year on the taxes. That's not a, that's a positive that we're not having to go up on it anyway. We have a renter down at the schoolhouse that has not paid rent for approximately two years. We have sent letters about it. We have not gotten any feedback. Jerome and I have talked about it, I think he's talked to Major Ricky more than the council members. I think it's time that we cut the lock off the door, put a lock of our own on it, advertise it for sale.
Well, I might have a comment today. Just information. The project that we're working on, we just talked about, we need another room. That is right at the back door, that first room. That'd be a perfect place for what we was talking about, in the, we seen happening. That would be a perfect, if the room's in any kind, I don't, I don't want the room up big or anything.
No, I don't think.
But before we rent it, I think we need to look into that.
It's down, down all by yours, but.
No, if, if, the double doors here outside, that first way over here is that first door.
I mean, the back.
The back way, yeah. That first door.
That would be one next to.
It's where Cindy, yeah, that's right.
But I think that's, that's the next step on that. We can't get any, we can't get any returns, we have failed to return on deliverable. Two or three different people think they know where the person is, but that hasn't helped or hasn't worked, so we don't need, we just need to move on and get that over with.
Because it's, well, it's supposed to be a couple months, and it's been two years. That's beyond reason.
Nobody knows where we're finding.
So you have to move forward.
We need a motion.
I reckon it would work.
I make a motion that we could lock on the door and take possession of the room.
I'll second it.
And then, including in that, I recommend that we, the city maintains that room for our purposes if it works out, before we consider renting it.
Which would be temporary.
Yeah.
Because we have this project.
Well, not if we pursue, but yeah, for now, for now, that's enough, that's my motion.
Okay, we've got a lady over here with a camera in the night. She worked with the Brooklyn Free Press.
Used to.
Reporter.
Used to.
She is now in the process of starting a website about Brooks County and the towns in Brooks County, and what we're trying to do and what we're not doing. Well, she's going to be positive on everything. Nothing but positive.
We hope.
You can lean at the regular. But it's Ms. Manning.
It's Ms. Manning.
First name I think.
It's Amanda.
Yeah, okay.
Amanda Manning. Yeah. The website I started up is a news website specifically targeting Brooks County and all the small towns within Brooks County. The news that I put on this website pertains to this area and this area only. I do videos in case somebody missed a meeting for one of the cities that they live in, for the council members and the mayors or whatever. I also do public hearings, and I do it for the Brooks County Commissioners, and Mr. Lee can assess that. I also do videos of events such as y'all's Peacock Festival, as well as pictures, and those go on my website as well. A little bit about whatever festival y'all are putting on at the time. Farmer's Market has been on there before. Peacock Festival is on there again for the upcoming next year. Pavlo's Haunted House is on there. Yes, honey, I took care of you. And a couple of other things.
They have a fall show coming up.
Yes, and I spoke with Jimmy about that, and I'm doing a story on that to help try to get some more support for y'all on that. And then I'll do a story afterwards, plus a video when I come in, do a little video of it, report on that. So yes, I'm putting y'all back on the map, so to speak. Along with Marvin and Burnt and Barwick and Dixie down there. A little bit of equipment, not so much because I'm not going to try and overstep Equipment Free Press too much, but I still want to be able to report stuff that they don't necessarily report on. And that's what I was trying to do with Equipment Free Press before I left there. And now, I'm not going to say I'm going to be completely positive on this. This is news, so the good, the bad, and the ugly is going to be on there. But it is what it is. It's four dollars for the subscription a month. You have that option for limited income residents. You also have the option of doing it yearly, and it's fifty-two dollars for the year. I do not do discounts for senior citizens yet. I'm hoping to get it up and going well. And by the first of the year, then I will set a discount for senior citizens as well as first responders and vets. So crossing my fingers it works and that y'all really enjoy it.
Will be advertising available?
Yes, advertising is available. So if you have something that you want to advertise classified, I do those as well as just regular ads. And I will work with you on those. So y'all, you have to do is just contact me. BCNewsandStories.com.
So it's all digital?
It's all digital. And if it can grow like I think it can, I hope to be able to print sometime next year. I need y'all's pictures. Oh, no, oh, no. Y'all are going to actually pose for these pictures. Hey, I take good pictures, thank you.
You can only do it as good as what you got.
You ain't got a perfect camera, you know that. All right, I don't know of anything else unless.
Oh, listen, here, I want to ask you about this, um, I'm sorry, you know the, around the park? You know the park, you know the, around the perimeters of the park? You get, are they going to move that, or are we?
What's she say?
Last thing, something like that goes around the playground. That's going around the new one.
The perimeter, you know.
Yes, ma'am, that's going, that's going to go around the new one too.
We're going to use all of those.
We'll reuse it.
On the new setup.
She's talking about cutting grass. Right.
Thing around the playground.
Don't talk about the grass. I'm just talking about the grass around the, you know, the perimeter, you know, around the edges.
It's not being cut. Now, we can't go out onto that field.
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking, I'm talking about the ditch. Outside with the ditch.
Yeah, the outside should be.
With the ditch, you know, and I try and put stuff down and kill that stuff on the outside, and it doesn't kill it, I don't know what it is. It's on the outside of the ditch, not on the ground or something.
Not on the front.
Okay. Well, we've got, we've got a new lawnmower man, so he might, he might be on his, on his way getting there, I don't know. I'll mention it though.
Because that was being maintained before, wasn't it?
Yeah. But I mean, you couldn't, the grass stuff around it, and you didn't really have to go in that much, but. I can't, this stuff, I don't know what kind of grass that is, that's ugly grass.
They say it's tough. Round up, doesn't do a whole lot of, like it just turned yellow. I've got some of that at the house. Okay, we have gotten two beds for doors and installation for the rotted outdoors that we have at schoolhouse that are wooden doors. These are metal doors which you cannot buy. A commercial wooden outdoor door anymore, they don't make them. Go metal, you rebuild something.
Okay, what doors are we talking about?
The rental rooms down there that are on the outside wings. Because some of them have just been patched. Long, there's nothing there to patch. That's the only thing you can put there.
How many of these do we need?
Well, we've got twelve doors altogether.
So you're wanting to do them as a group, or as would you?
And that's up to you all.
Where's somebody coming from?
What did we find out?
I'm trying to get permission to use a Thomas County splosh.
No, we've talked about.
The Brooks County, he said no.
He still said no.
He says there is a state hall that says we are not allowed to use that in different counties.
What about the recreation, I guess, that's four up there?
That is basically earmarked for the ground.
Yeah, for the grounds, it's not for construction. But there is a Thomas County one that kinda reads like it is, it says construction of facilities, so I'm trying to see if he will let us use it for repairs, um, and I, we don't need to build a new facility, we need to repair what we have, we need to replace, so.
You said, you told me it's not being repaired, so.
Yeah, so I told him we needed to replace the doors down there, so I'm trying to get an okay to use that one, but I don't have it yet.
And which one is that, what year?
Thomas County seventeen, I believe it was, I was reading.
What year, how much is it?
Here, four hundred and something, it's, it's big.
It'll be good if we could use that.
Well, that man is tough on what you can use.
Now, he did say he was gonna try to get the Brooks County ones back on the ballot to change the wording, because he realizes the way it is right now, there's nothing we can do with it.
So, what is, what do we have an answer, did he give you any idea, do you just do it today, or was it?
From the Thomas County splosh that, that did it today, I just got my note today, so, for Brooks County.
So, yeah, we haven't been waiting a long time.
We've been asking for a long time.
So, if we can't use that money, what is our options?
That goes for.
Jonathan, I mean, I. Jonathan. With, with all this money sitting here, you know.
I'd rather use it somewhere else.
Yeah, I would too.
They either try to, so I, I'm trying to get a yes for a splosh, I just can't tell you that I have a yes, right, understood. So, do we need to table it until we have an answer?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, you, you had got to put on Camp Rock check out of them.
But if we.
Until he okay's it.
I would say though, if we do, if we get an answer that looks like we can use, you know, some splosh money on the doors, that we should move forward with some of these doors, cause they are falling apart, which is why the one got vandalized so bad, cause it was just, I mean, it.
I mean, I might get a yes tomorrow, I might get a yes next week, I don't know, let's do this. Let's make a motion that if we can use that money, that it's already agreed upon, and we don't have to wait a month for something to happen, so I'll make a motion that if, if, um, we can use the twenty-seventeen splosh now, and to purchase, how many doors? Seven, we need twelve, twelve, there's twelve down there, that's okay.
Twelve total.
Twelve, twelve total, and we have plenty of money that we could use on, upon approval. So, somebody have to second us.
You going, go ahead and take your contractor, yes, well, certainly.
Yes, yeah, I make a motion that we do manly construction.
And I will tell you that, um, door products will be decent, while the doors and hardware.
I knew that, yeah.
That's just, that's just where it is, that's there. We actually had, um.
Can he would probably do the work anyway, right?
That's the cost of it, I don't know. But, um, Stone sent somebody out here to look at them, he never called us back, he never talked to my son about the prices or anything else, so.
I mean.
And, I mean, he, he told Patrick and Seth, he said, we'll put the doors in, we're gonna buy them, door products, that has to end, but he didn't go as far as to even call the price.
But I will, let me ask one question, does he have time to do it manly, is he gonna have the time?
He says he will yet.
Because it was still waiting.
If he doesn't have time, then it will slip over to Andrew, he will put them in. He probably will put in a couple of them with manly, because the rig is got to be done. Not having to tear out everything, that's, that's where the change in, in original money came in, is that they don't have to tear out all of the footware, all the bag in there. Or what is that now?
I'll say this. Who's already said?
All the way.
Who said? Oh.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor with the.
That's right.
I'm in favor with that.
How, how are you gonna notify the, the people who rent those units when their doors are gonna be working on? Because we have our, we have our whole locks on there. Yeah, so.
All right, um, it's on the, it's on the bid, but I didn't mention it, there will be old keys, I mean, there'll be individual door keys.
Okay.
I asked for three keys, that way the city can have one if and when they need to get in there for any reason. And once we set it up and get ready to do it, we'll have to let all the renters know, bring us your key, or either be available on day, whatever, to unlock the door so we can repair.
Cause I know I have two, I have two keys for my.
Right.
For my lock.
But see, it's like it is now, it's, it's the case that we're dealing with here.
Right.
We've got, we've got to cut a lock, which is worth something. But if you don't fulfill, fulfill your part of contract, then you've, you've given up that right, so.
Right, right.
But we don't wanna start cutting locks.
Also, if you have a window broke, or a leak, or, or something happened, and you can't get a hold of it, then this leaves us unable to take care of it.
I noticed there was a window broken on the first wing, on the very end, it broke, and then.
That's, that's the bathroom, the bathroom, you know, big.
It's a bathroom, okay.
But that was.
It was a small hole, and it's been enlarged.
That was part of that vandalizing that just went on.
Cause I know my windows were broken last year.
That has not been as big a problem in the last year, year and a half as it was several years ago, they, they would get broken on replacement. We started putting legs in instead of glass in there, and we still contemplate covering it up, we just haven't got it started yet.
Mr. Cleveland, Jerome said that they can, that we can get one of those signs for the buggies, or whatever you said, as long as they stay off Harris, Jerome said, other than crossing.
Okay.
And that means no four-wheelers, there's a difference between, you know, off-road.
Okay.
And the golf carts.
Okay.
He said that should be wrong.
So, as long as they stay off one, two, two.
Other than if they have to cross.
There is.
And he, he's saying about crossing, they, see, before they said we had to designate a place to cross, then he says, and I'm sure it's changed, it's been twenty, it's been twenty years, you know, and there's a lot more of them now, ask him about them.
He'll be able to tell you more once again, but he says, they're just crossing over it, that's fine, but I see them just flying up and down.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Take the wrong ones, the right ones, I can think about.
Right.
That's another thing, some golf, or golf carts, actually can follow, and your D U T laws, they have that tag, and all lights on, and some aren't.
Yes, there's rules.
I just want people to be aware of that.
I mean, really, it's a wonderful thing to be able to, to use them, especially for the elderly that who can't drive anymore, but that, you know, they can ride something like that, and ride something like that, and, you know, we're just a small community.
Right, exactly.
But it is dangerous if you get on a freeway.
Mr. Parker, you gonna pass any update on the exit doors that were torn off of the Hunter House Park? Cause we open in forty-six days, have you got an update on when theirs might be in there?
He told me that they would be here, I think, the twenty-sixth or the twenty-eighth of this month.
September?
Uh, yes. That's a few weeks.
That's good, we'll be all right, that's good.
Yeah. The biggest problem that they're having, and it's like everybody else, is supply. Um. He's got doors, he's had orders in three months, some four months, and, uh, it's like a lot of the stuff for the schools down there. They needed them installed last week at least, some of them they actually are doing while they're in school, for those who actually are not getting them, but some of that goes back to, we don't know yet if we're gonna change one, uh, well, yeah, we're gonna change one, you know, tomorrow. That don't work, but, um, delivery time is, is a pain, and has been the last two years. It's, it's slacking off a little bit, not as bad as it was, but it's still, still flowing, but I do know that that is supposed to be on the calendar for the month of August, which ain't much left. I'll take care of it, or something, I'll get some more boards or whatever.
They'll un-screw, and then when they get through renting, those screws will go up there, it's just a pain, but we can do what we gotta do.
I think it'll be taken care of unless something, at least it's hanging up. All right, so we have any other thing else we need to bring up?
We'll do what we gotta do, don't worry, cause they run into me, running, running up the ramp.
Mr. Larry, you got anything?
One thing, a lot of, a lot of things we talked about tonight, you know, like the kids, I wouldn't wear them, but it just seemed right to, to, you know, follow my conscience and stuff, but a lot of the time I did hear, I don't know if y'all can contact me, let me know what we're gonna be talking about, it's always stuff off.
This was kind of coming together in a hurry on tonight, and we had talked about it, but it hadn't gone right down to the line on it.
I think every council member should have been notified of it, cause I was clueless too.
It's true.
I was clueless too, but I didn't want to, you know, but, yeah, when something like that happens, I think we all need to notify them, um.
We can talk about that, and, and.
I don't need to know, no, that's, it's. I don't need it.
I mean, it wouldn't have, it, it doesn't look good that we're dumbfounded, like, we don't know what they're talking about, we don't know what they're apologizing for.
Yeah, right.
You know, that just didn't look good, so I told everybody, yeah, we, everybody.
And I think the police department and, well, throughout the, then was, did a very good job.